I'd like to call to order the May 12th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. My name is Secretary, would you call the role please?
Mr. Dallow, absent, Ms. DeSico.
Here.
Mr. Meredith.
Here.
Ms. Putros.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. And I just got two new pair of glasses and all three of them are sitting at my desk. So it is actually May 13th, not the 12th, so. Next item, or first item is approval of the agenda.
So move.
Support.
Who's in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, approval of the minutes from the April 22nd.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. This evening, we've got two site plans, under new business, a site plan under old business, and then a handful of items with the planning director's report. First, site plan number 19-12, Randall Belastry. Come on up, or whoever's gonna...
Ken Howard, you want to do it?
Just whoever's gonna talk, I just need your name and your address.
Yes, good evening, Jim Butler, PEA, we are the engineering consultant for the project. Address is 2430 Rochester Court, Suite 100, Troy, Michigan, 48083.
Okay, what are you requesting this?
This evening, we are requesting site plan approval for a 35,000 and 13 square foot addition to the existing facility at Belastry Court. As a part of the construction of this expansion, we will be reworking the west parking lot.
So how about you put one on the easel, so at least, you know, somebody can see it?
I forgot step one. As I was saying, the west parking lot right now, because of the construction, will be completely reconfigured and reconstructed. We have read the planning comments that we received from the planning department, and we have no objection to making the changes there. We realize we do need a variance for the height. This building steps up as you go to the north. The first part of the building is about 30 feet, the next steps 35, and the last half is 40. We're gonna be meeting that if we do need to get a variance, and we'll certainly pursue that.
Okay. Ms. Mizic, your comments?
Okay, so, as Mr. Butler said, they're gonna need a variance for the building height. The parking spaces along the cul-de-sac are not permitted, so if you can just eliminate those. And then on the east portion of the site, there's extensive outdoor storage, and it's not enclosed, so is there any way that you guys can either clean that up, or provide some sort of screening to block all that outdoor storage?
If you're gonna speak, you need to come up and tell me who you are.
Hi, my name's Randy Belastry. What we've been quoting out lately is what the people that occupy in front of my site, they actually bought a tent structure, and they're putting it over their stock and outside material, and I would like to do the same thing if that's permitted, if that's allowed. I'm not sure if they were permitted, or if they just erected... You know where I'm talking about, it's a...
Yeah.
Four-E automation, that's what it is, yeah. It used to be Utica.
Okay.
So is that allowable? Because that's what I want to do, because I want to get the... Most of the stock we've been storing inside, but there is some stuff still out there, which I want to take care of.
Will most of it be then enclosed in that structure? Most of the items that you have out there now?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Most of the items that you have out there now, will they be all enclosed in that structure?
It will be under the tent, if you will.
Right.
They won't have sites, but, so the water will be shedding away from, away from inside of where it's stored.
Okay.
Is that fine?
Julie and I both looked at the site, and we don't have any objections to outdoor storage in these industrial sites, and we don't want to micromanage having some, you know, a code officer going out and saying, "Well, this pallet's in the wrong spot." I mean, you need to be able to run your business with a degree of flexibility, but this is a chance to at least kind of organize it a little bit on the site. So that's all, that's the objective here.
Is a tent agreeable?
Absolutely.
If things were some are organized under a tent...
If you need building code, it's fine with us.
And I appreciate your comments, and I've been working on that anyways, kind of a neat freak.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's all the comments that I had.
Great. Anyone, any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Mr. Flynn.
I think, geez, it was probably almost 10 years ago when you guys came in originally, you were doing pieces for the F-35, is that still the case?
That's correct, yeah.
Great.
A lot more than that, but yes, that's one of our programs.
Yeah, pretty cool.
One more, you know, we met with Jim about two weeks ago, I think, and, you know, there was some urgency, that's why we didn't do the preliminary review. We've worked with Jim's firm for years, we thought if we can move this through... He came to the counter for preliminary discussion with the final site plan, so we knew this was gonna be well done, so we don't want to hold these gentlemen up.
I appreciate that.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve site plan 19-12 for Randall Belastry Models and Tools, 51400, Belastry Court, parcel number 23-07-14-400-039, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department and engineering comments and obtaining approval for the necessary variances from the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Turner. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
Yes.
Chair of the CHS. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item, site plan number 19-15, Shelby Township Library.
I haven't had the chance to meet all of you yet. I am Katie Esther, I'm your local public librarian, I'm the director of the Shelby Township Library.
I remember when the library was in the basement of this building.
I do not remember that.
That's all, that's...
It's gonna be so much better. So today, we're just gonna go over our site plan and a little bit of our interior plan, our floor plan. Do you have the one with the, what it's gonna look like, so I can just kind of... The exterior, the big poster I brought.
That's a high press board flipper.
It is. Yeah, I wanted to show you what the exterior of the building's gonna look like, so I can kind of give you a point of reference. This is looking at the building with the police station on your right-hand side and the library on the left, and that's the front of the building right there, which will be the only entrance. This is our site plan. We have planned for the building to be about 26,000 square feet. It is right across the street. It is as if, like Wizard of Oz style, the library was plunked down on top of the Parks and Rec Building. So the Parks and Rec Building will go away, the library will be there in its place overlooking the park and the ban shell through our back windows. Both the front and the back of the library are all glass to take in all the scenery around us. We do have parking in the front and parking along the side, which will be volunteer and staff parking along the side there. And in the back of the library, there'll be a patio, and that'll be able to be used for library functions, or for people who are using the park that want to stop and sit in some Adirondack chairs and overlook the park. This is our floor plan. So the big rotunda, you see, the big circular room is our children's area. One of the few things that, we had a top 10 list of things that we really wanted in the new building. One of them was a revised children's area. Our children's area now is really tiny, and most of the business we do is with families with young children. So that big rotunda room will be the new children's area, and right next to it is a children's storytime area. Right now, we don't have a separate area when we have children's programs, they just take place in the middle of the children's room, and now we'll have a specific room that's dedicated just to children's programming. In the top corner, we have a floor-to-ceiling fireplace that overlooks our reading lounge. A private citizen gave us a donation for $25,000 for the building of that fireplace that's gonna overlook the reading lounge, which will be really beautiful. We have a technology lab, which is something we've always wanted to do. We want to teach classes, how to get an email address, how to start a LinkedIn account, all that sort of thing. We have librarians that are trained to teach that sort of thing, and we have nowhere to do it. So now we'll have a technology lab. We have a teen area. We've never had a teen area, dedicated teen area before, someplace for all those kids once they get out of school, to walk up to the library and have a space to call their own. And we also have a, two meeting rooms. One will hold about 210 people, which will be the largest meeting space on campus after the library is built. That was one of our huge wish list items, because we have huge programs for children and adult all throughout the summer. We have a huge summer reading program that brings in about 8,000 people over the summer, and we have our programs just in the middle of the library or out on the back lawn. We don't have a dedicated place, so then it was really important to us to have a dedicated place in the new library. We have lots of meeting spaces, so you're meeting your investment group, or if your kid needs tutoring and needs to go to the library, there'll be individual spaces. We have six individual or group study rooms where people can meet. We have community rooms, so if the Kiwanis Club wanted to meet there, if we've got an HOA that wants to meet there, the optimists want to meet there, we'll have lots of space for community groups to meet. And we have an elevation, I think. So that's the, the bottom one is the back of the building with all those beautiful windows that overlook the park there. At each of those windows is a table with a lamp, so people can sit there, and they can plug their laptops in and work there. And then those two doors that go out to the lawn will go out to the patio that's there. Those won't be, those doors won't be open all the time, because that's a, that's a security issue, having people be able to go out many different doors in the library. But there will be sidewalks on both sides, so that people can get to that patio anytime, whether the library's open or not. I can answer any other questions for you. I could talk about this for hours, but...
What's the capacity of the big meeting room, meeting room two?
Two 10. The big meeting room is two 10, the small meeting room is about 40.
104? No. Oh, meeting room one, okay, yeah, oh, wow, okay.
Two 10.
Where does this room hold? So the big one be about as big as this room, or is it bigger?
Little bit bigger.
Cool.
Mr. Win, I had asked you a question earlier about, given that the engineer who, the firm that engineered this site is also the township's engineer, which is usually the firm that double checks the work of the engineer that's presented, was there any kind of check or balance on that, sir?
No, there isn't. I asked our engineer, and they're doing the engineering, too.
Okay. So we're assuming they didn't make a mistake? All right.
I did, you know, we treated this like a normal site plan, to make sure that it met all of our requirements, and there's only a few minor deficiencies. One was, there was no landscaping plan, so we'll have to do that. Trash receptacle screening, that wasn't clarified, and Mr. Wood from building, he probably had a couple of minor comments on the accessible, handicap accessible parking spaces. Otherwise, it meets all of our requirements.
Okay. Now, are the materials comparable to what's being used at the district court, or...
No, they're different.
Okay.
And I think, I think it almost needs to be different for this site.
Yeah.
Now, I think those buildings look really well together, you know, and they have a certain function. I think this should be, should be different.
It's mostly masonry with some wood accents. We were hoping to go for something that sort of reflected the natural park feeling that's there, so we wanted, we didn't want it to look like Elk Lodge, we want it to look like sort of upscale up north.
It's definitely upscale.
It's not the Taj Mahal. It's very modest.
Who gets to write that check, Mr. Win?
Yeah.
Mr. Win, did you want to give your report, please?
I just did, that's all I was, just four minor site plan corrections.
We did, about the handicap parking, we did insist on more than is usual for a site that size, because I think our demographics reflect it, and we know that we have large groups of group homes that come and visit the library during the day, and they come in big vans, so it was important to us to, for them to have enough van accessibility, handicap parking spaces, so there might be more than you'd usually see.
Okay. To the board, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mrs. Esther, let's look at the north elevation for a second.
Sure.
You mentioned security, and I agree with you, but since these doors are gonna open to patios, one can assume they'll be open quite a bit. How are you gonna, no?
No. And actually, I can speak towards security. We had the Shelby Township Police go over this entire thing with a fine tooth comb to let us know if they saw any major security flaws, or anything that we needed to be aware of, and we changed the design quite a bit, based on recommendations that the police made. Those will be emergency-only doors, so they'll have a panic bar across them, and they'll be alarmed. We have one right now at the library that goes into our back garden. We're able to turn that alarm off when, say, there's, we're doing a chalk program with kids on the outside, or something like that. We prop the door up, and we turn the alarm off, and it would be open for that span of an hour, an hour and a half. Those will not be open on a regular basis. It's just too difficult for, I mean, I have five librarians, including myself, to run the building six days a week, so I can't have multiple doors that people can come and go out of, it would be too difficult for security reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of Site Plan Number 19-15 to permit the development of a new township library on the municipal campus site, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Putros?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair of the CHS.
Thank you very much.
Katie, I'll bring those boards back tomorrow if you want.
Next under item under old business, site plan number 19-11, William Smith Maverick Bar and Restaurant. Mr. Win, this is...
Chairman, the owner of that restaurant was interested in approving a building addition. This site's on the east side of Shaner, south of 23 Mile Road, part of the Summit Complex. This is that out parcel, it's occupied by a restaurant. There's a patio on the north side of the building, he wanted to enclose that for a full addition. Building elevations match the building itself, they're not displacing any parking, and there's no setback issue. So I approved it administratively, but I wanted to at least share that with the commission tonight.
Okay. Any questions of the planner?
Good chicken wings.
Necessary for a motion, receiving file?
Receiving file will be fine.
All right.
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Easy enough. Under new business, the representatives and owner of Legacy Village Preliminary PUD are...
Chairman, well, they're coming up, can I kind of tee this up a little bit? This is the site at the southwest corner of 25 and Van Dyke. We've been talking to them over the years about their plans, and they'd asked to come to the meeting to kind of just explain where they're at. Just as reference, the site's 130 acres, it's zoned R8, which is a multiple-family classification. The frontage is zoned C2. The original PUD plan, which Jim will explain tonight, was approved back in 2006, and it included a mixed-use development of single-family, multiple-family, and commercial. The only two final site plans that were approved were the, for the bank at the corner, the 5th Third Bank, and then along the western boundary, there were 78 detached single-family homes that are under construction. They, the owners have been here several times for some revisions, which we've, a couple of them we've approved, but they've never finalized through the site plan process. So we were talking about this last week, and I said, "Maybe it's a good opportunity to come in and kind of reset where we're at with this," so that there's some continuity over the next year or two when they come back. And since we had a light agenda, I thought it would be appropriate to have a little time to spend with the commission, rather than just Julie and I at the counter.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Prior to the meeting, Commissioner Moore pointed out how old I was, so I remember the library in the basement, and I remember when this was a horse farm, so...
Well, we were all there together. My name is Jim Eppink, I'm with Chapp Inc. Partners in Clarkston, Michigan. I'm with Steve Mancini tonight of Mancini Enterprises, and also the owner of Legacy Village. So we don't have a formal request tonight, we don't have a site plan application, but we, it's a project that's important to the community, certainly important to us and to the Mancini family, and so we wanted to at least reengage the conversation with the planning commission, ultimately the board. And just giving you an update of where we are at. In 2006, and in 2006, the original PUD was approved. That was a long process just to get there, so I'm thinking we probably started this in about '04. We had an awful lot of meetings with the neighbors, we were out there on Saturday mornings walking the property, really making sure it was a good fit for the community. And because of that, we created a site plan that really transitioned from the far west against adjacent existing single-family homes, out to Van Dyke, and how busy it is there, 25 Mile Road. And so we went from single-family on the far west side, about 78 single-family homes, which are under construction now, to a center area of multiple-family, anywhere from duplex units up to, I think, 12-unit buildings, so kind of a mix of multi-family, but about 440, a little less than 440, or multi-family homes, to a commercial development on the corner. There's a bank out there now, but we envisioned about 100,000 additional square feet of retail with some out parcel sites. And then, one of the strange things is, we've got that major power line that kind of diagonally cuts off the property, and we had proposed some senior housing there, about 250 either apartments or beds, or, you know, some type of assisted, assisted, all the way to independent housing in that far southern area. In 2006, it was approved, the bank was built, the single-family neighborhood started to take off. I think we've got more than about two dozen homes out there now. It slowed down, obviously, right away because of the '08, '09, '10 recession, and then it picked back up again. Some things that Steve and his team have been actively doing, and I should back up to say that Steve and his family have owned the site for over 40 years, so it's incredibly important to do it right, not only for the community, for the neighbors, but for Steve's family as well, hence the name Legacy, and how right we want to get this. One of the big things that we've been working on over the last half dozen years is trying to identify that assisted living component. We've came back into your commission and to the board a few times over the last few years. We established some cottage units where, you know, if I had to go into an assisted living, my wife could live in an independent cottage and, with on the same campus. We had some really innovative ideas, spent a lot of time, a lot of money on engineering and architecture, and for one reason or another, either because we also were working with the DEQ on some of the regional drain issues, but it really never got to the point where we came in and asked for formal approval on that. A big component of that was just frankly, the market. There's an awful lot of assisted living in Shelby Township, in Macomb County, and all over, and so we got to a point where we frankly think, from a market point of view, that assisted living, independent living is saturated. And so rather than start to plug in components that we don't think are gonna thrive, aren't gonna be great for that kind of area of the town center here, we pulled back and said, you know, "Let's take a closer look." What we don't have is a plan, per se, to come in, but what we are doing is starting to do these market studies. And again, we want to give you a kind of a peek under the tent of what we're thinking, and then figure out how we can engage your commission, a subcommittee, in some of those discussions. One plan that we came back over the last few years was to turn the whole thing into single-family. We never approved that plan because, again, we were worried about saturation with 130 acres, all single-family, although, you know, was probably the fastest planning commission meeting I ever had to change the zoning from to single-family. It was too much of one thing. And so what we're thinking now, and the plan on the bottom, hopefully you have one in your packets, it probably reads a little bit better, but on the far right, I'm sorry, the far left, we've got the existing single-family in yellow. What we're anticipating right now is mirroring that with another block or another row of single-family. It's doing well, it's been a great transition from the existing single-family to the west. You can see the quality of the homes that we're building, and the prices are really driving up the area. And so we think that the market now, more than likely, is gonna want to take another row of single-family to really create a neighborhood there, rather than just a street. That would allow us to take that middle component and take it from just a huge amount of multi-family, probably way too dense even in the early days before the economy softened, but make a reasonable amount of single, of multi-family. These are probably townhomes, probably, again, maybe anything from duplexes up to maybe four or eight plexes, but a smaller quantity than that 440 that we had originally. The retail still works, we've done a couple different iterations of retail. Because of so much activity up at 26 Mile, we still aren't seeing this as a big box location. I think everybody remembers when we came in with Menards. That would have been, we would have been done, but it wasn't the right thing, and the neighbors and your commission proved that out, but it, you know, Menards will never fit there. We've always kind of envisioned it as a fitness center location. That may come to be, but, but right now, we're thinking more neighborhood retail, some restaurants, kind of a, you know, a higher-end type plaza that has some real character. The big blue circle there, and we know for sure, Jim Jones and his team spent an awful lot of time with the Drain Commission, and we created really what'll become a regional detention and retention area that'll feed into that drain. There's been all sorts of studies going up and down that corridor. We know what we have to do from a water point of view, there'll end up being a pretty nice-looking lake there, that again, if we have some restaurants, they could ultimately look over that lake. That is essentially fixed, not exactly the shape that I drew, but that's gonna be a big feature right there, that'll be a nice buffer from Van Dyke. What was formerly the senior housing, again, we've got to get underneath those power lines somehow. We don't think it's senior housing. We've seen an awful lot of demand for apartments, which we know is, you know, a word that some people perk up about, but we think, when done well, when done right, when we have a really dedicated ownership that is gonna own this property for another 40 years, that with the Amazon activity, all the other uses coming to Shelby Township, we know that with the right high-quality rental-type housing would probably be really appropriate there and really, really do well. It's buffered to the south by a big regional wetland, there's not gonna be homes immediately against it, it's tucked underneath those wires, so it really is kind of landlocked, as it were. It's not gonna expand, but we think architecturally, from a neighborhood point of view, from sidewalks, from connection, there's no reason that can't be part of the development, as opposed to just a sequestered little side development. So that's, that's what we're thinking right now. We'd love some off-the-cuff feedback, we'd like to know how you'd like to go forward. I think Steve's intention, and Steve, anything you'd like to add, but our intention, after kind of working on it over 13 years, is to move more quickly now. We think that the economy's with us, we can do multiple phases at once. So our intent is to get some feedback, to do a lot of market research, come back to you with some plans, and ask, the planners will tell us, but I think that the process would be to amend the PUD, which is a public process. We'd have to go through all that with you, but that's our hope and our intent to bring it back to you.
Okay.
If I could, quick comment, Steve Mancini, I live in Clinton Township. I think our real goal is just to hit, you know, we started off with some very expensive homes along the westerly border, which is Lawson Creek, to just try to hit, you know, four, maybe five different markets, price points. It's just, you know, I don't think we're gonna absorb this site as we previously thought. We were thinking five, maybe 10 years at the max. I just don't think we're gonna absorb if we don't have a little more diversity. So that's really the goal, is just try to hit enough markets to get this project completed, and certainly get the commercial going, because I think that'll also help. So that's, maybe that'll help drive the market. So that's really our goal.
Okay. I guess my initial reaction is, show me something that I can comment on.[1768.23] I mean, conceptually, this isn't a whole lot different from what you've, you've proposed previously. And, I mean, the apartment's really gonna depend on what, what, what does that look like? So rather than give you a knee-jerk, oh, we can't do apartments at any north of, you know, whatever, whatever, random. But let's, you know, and we could do this in a study session. I think we can do it fairly, our agendas aren't crazy. We can do this, you know, fairly quickly. I think we're all agree that if you wanna move quickly on this, we, we encourage that, you know. What so far has been done is no, no one has, can complain about, so...
I like the idea of a study session. I think that that's worked well in the past. It's such a big site, and obviously, we're not giving you much to bite on here, but we can come back and do that and give you some packets to look at it first.
I think that's probably the fairest, to everyone, 'cause right now, we'll just, you know, we're gonna comment on it.
It'd be nice, I think, but if you're looking for any kind of feedback, I would say it definitely has some merit. You're decreasing density in some cases, and that's definitely something that, as the board representative, that the Township Board likes that, so I don't know that it would be a tough sell. I just think we'd have to look at elevations and, and kind of see it flushed out a little bit more, but I definitely think it has merit.
Sure. To be honest with you, I don't even know if it's that much of an increase in density, given what had been approved, 'cause you're putting more single-family, taking a little bit of the multi.
We'd probably...
And really, you're kind of, you're switching out, you know, the, the senior, multi-senior apartment-type living to a, to a single-family.
There's a large density envisioned there from the original PUD. I can't imagine a scenario that we would come back with more density. I likely would go down.
Right.
But you're right, it would be using those pieces and trying to figure out...
Moving around, Glenn.
Yeah, I remember, I think the goal is always to have some reasonable transition from the neighborhood to the west, which is single-family, moving to higher density. And the original plan only included the 78 single-family lots that were built. So now, when they went to the, that one plan, which is mostly single-family, I think the real reference should be the original plan. So I think they're expanding the single-family, and I think the products they're talking about for multiple probably would transition really well here. You know, two other comments. The units that Mr. Mancini's company built, they're different elevations. They're real attractive units, too. I mean, they all have the front-facing garages, but they have some really unique architectural features, which I think are unique to the community. And, you know, that establishes a nice pattern. You have to kind of live up to that. And I think it's always been the market. How do we respond to the market? And I kind of applaud the Mancini family for being cautious and going slowly. You know, the fact that it hasn't all been built is, I think, a credit to them, more than anything. I just wanted to get the ball rolling. I thought this was a nice way to do it.
So when, you know, as soon as you're, you're ready to take a next step, we're happy to accommodate.
We'll, we'll communicate with Julie and, and your team, and we'll, we'll, you know, probably be back in the next two months, six weeks, two months, by the time we get those plans and get the engineering. And now, we're at a point where we can, you know, start to talk about some, not some bolts of the project.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's time.
Planning Director's report.
Can I go down there and...
Please.
You may recall, maybe Mr. Roth, you're the only ones who remembers this, but there's a three or four-story medical office building on the west side of Shaner, south of 23 Mile Road. It's called Shelby, I think it's Shelby Medical Mall. When that was built, the site plan included, there was a separate site plan for another smaller building on the entrance road going in. You can see it here. I think it was, I forget how big it was, maybe 50,000 or 60,000 square feet. That was approved in 2008. We re-approved it in 2013. They never got the final site, I mean, the final site plan's expired. They didn't get engineering because of the economy. It was last week that the original developer approached us, saying they really wanted to start this process back again, 'cause they have a tenant for the building. And I thought, well, it's the same building, the same site plan. Julie and I looked at, the plans are identical. So my recommendation is, instead of starting all over with the whole new site plan process for the same property, the same site, that we just re-improve their site plan a second time. I think that would be the prudent way to do it. We're still gonna make sure they resubmit one, so we can stamp and sign it, make sure all the details are there, but I'd hate to have them go through a process, just to go through a process.
From what I recall, the elevation sort of mirrored...
Wait, what?
What?
Did you just say what I thought I heard you say?
Oh, process.
You'd hate to have somebody go through a process just for the sake of going through the process? You are about to retire.
Well, but, but we're gonna go through an abbreviated process. How's that?
Oh, all right.
You're influencing me as well, so...
That's good.
So the building elevation is identical to what we approved. It's, I think it's identical to the building.
Yeah, just a smaller version of...
Just a smaller version of it. It's a great, it's a great site.
Okay. Any, any, any questions of the petitioner?
So moved as described by the planner.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gentili's Collision is an automotive repair building on the west side of Van Dyke, south of 23. They approached us last week. They wanted to put a vestibule on the north side of the building and change the front facade slightly. Very modest changes. I didn't think this would be something that would necessitate going through the whole site plan review process. If you had no objections, I would approve this administratively.
Mr. Flynn, do you agree?
The treasurer concurs.
Wanna make that motion?
So moved as described by the...
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is an easy crowd. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.